To call this meeting of the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee to order. And I'd like to ask that we take item number eight on consent without objection.
No objection.
And I'd like to begin with item number one.
Item number one, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Ms. Wendy Grace Macy as the permanent general manager of the Personnel Department.
Welcome. I wonder if you could tell us a little bit about yourself and your background for the record.
Yes, good morning Chair Kretz and good morning Councilmember O'Farrell. It's a pleasure to be here before the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee. I am looking forward to the city of Los Angeles. I have an extensive human resources background, but I also have background in other areas. I originally started out as a practicing attorney and then I worked in Los Angeles Unified School District as an attorney in their legal department Personnel Commission of the LUSD. Most recently, I've been at the county of Sonoma where I do human resources, including labor relations, risk management, and the full gamut of human resources. And so I'm looking forward to experience which has been in school districts and in county to city government.
And what are your goals going in for what you want to do to improve the department in the next couple of years?
I'm very much looking forward to working with the staff in the Personnel Department and working on tips to help to empower the staff throughout the city of Los Angeles, assist improvements in streamlining hiring, and got a great opportunity here to really transform our workforce.
And do you have any thoughts on things we can do for our IT end of Personnel?
Technology is a very critical component of service delivery of us in our way that we attract applicants to the city. I'd like to explore with our staff new ways of reaching out to potential applicants. Again, we're going to be, like many entities, we're going to be experiencing some, like to use social media and other forms of technology, as well as using it as a way so that people again streamline the hiring process and get people into more rapidly and use it as an effective communication tool also, too.
Mr. O'Farrell, any additional questions?
Congratulations, I think your resume speaks for itself. You have a stellar resume. I'm going to ask a question that I should know the answer to, but I don't. How many people will you be overseeing in the department?
I believe there are 468 positions in the Personnel Department.
Okay. And so that's like small potatoes for you based on your experience?
It's, no, but it's much larger than Sonoma, which is where I was most recently, where there were only 4,000 employees countywide. I look forward to working with our staff and...
Do you have any observations on the organizational structure as it now stands? Any ideas? I'm not suggesting anything, just what your thoughts are.
I am very interested in all the areas the Personnel Department currently has under its purview, but I would also like to see us partner effectively with other organizations within cities such as the CAO's office and the City Attorney's Office. Anything that we can do in Personnel Department to assist some of these others and perhaps share our knowledge would be great.
Thank you.
Well, without objection, we will send a recommendation for your approval to the full council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Item number two.
Item two, communication from the mayor relative to the exemption of one project coordinator position for the CAO pursuant to Charter Section 1001b.
Good morning Commissioners, Jenny Yao with the CAO's office. The item before the committee today requests approval of one exempt project coordinator position in the CAO's office to provide administrative support for the Innovation Fund and Innovation and Productivity Commission, or IPC. The 2014-15 adopted budget provides for the establishment of the Innovation Fund to be administered by the IPC. The Innovation Fund will provide funding to city departments to improve the quality, efficiency, and effectiveness of city service through innovation, productivity, and performance measurement. The IPC with the assistance of the CAO will review the proposals for funding and make recommendations to the audits and ITGS committees and the city council. A portion of the funding that was provided in the budget will be used to fund this position to provide staffing and administrative support. If the committee has any questions at this time, I'll be happy to address them.
I have one big question. It's very clear why we need the position. From the report, it's not that clear why it needs to be exempt.
I think the skills and special skills that would be required of the position would require it to be an exempt position. Personnel Department generally doesn't test for the classification of project coordinator is generally an exempt position.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's enough of an answer to satisfy me on that. I know we're exempting a lot of positions. We're asking for more exempt positions. I think we're doing this a little bit lightly.
Jody Ochsimer with the CAO, I hope you don't think we're doing this lightly. There are a couple of reasons why an exempt position would be needed for this function. One is expediency. The Innovation Fund is getting launched very, very quickly and we can bring staff in a little more quickly. The skills, duties, responsibilities associated with the position actually cover kind of a broader array than is readily attached to a management analyst, for example. And I think primarily just to bring somebody quickly in and to have the opportunity to bring in people from the outside potentially is the primary reasons.
So is there no way to do it as a temporary emergency position instead?
So a temporary emergency would be a limited duration appointment and would be contingent upon the person competing successfully within the civil service system. So it would mean that the Personnel Department would be able to produce an exam and results and the person would have to be able to compete successfully within that limited window. And if they weren't, then we'd basically be starting over in six to eight months. And so we would lose the continuity. The plan for the Innovation Fund is to, and I should say, as one of the chairs, committee chairs who recommends appointments to the Innovation and Performance Commission, the commission has really very actively supported the Innovation Fund and they're very, very excited and passionate about the opportunities to reach out to all city employees. So very, very quickly, we're going to be reaching out to every city employee to ask them for their ideas and then those ideas will come to the CAO and be initially vetted. So we're going to need to be able to respond very quickly and then work with departments and the commission to be able to bring ideas that would be recommended for funding fast. I mean, the commission is hoping to be back to committee and council within two months. And without sort of knowing how many ideas we're going to get, I think a lot, and I think quickly, we want to be able to respond as quickly as possible, but then also to have the continuity to follow up.
Well, I'm somewhat completely satisfied with this. So here's what I'm going to ask. I'll ask for a detailed report back on exactly why this has to be an exempt position. And if that is compelling, then I'll just waive it out of the committee so it won't create some significant delay.
Mr. Chairman, may the mayor's office be heard on this?
Sure, of course.
Thank you. Obviously, this comes...
For the record, not that I don't know.
This is Rick Cole, Deputy Mayor for Budget and Innovation. And we are the primary mayoral liaison with the CAO's office. We are the mayor's lead on the Innovation Fund and we're also the lead on Personnel. So I think this item is symptomatic, Mr. Chairman, of the challenge that's being addressed by another item on today's agenda and frankly by the item you just unanimously moved forward, which is the tremendous challenge we have with the workforce today. As the mayor has said many times, the problem with performance in our city is not the quality of our workforce. The problem with performance in our city, besides the obvious financial challenges, are the tremendous problems with systems that were designed for a different era and a different time. And we're trying to do two things, Mr. Chairman, and by "we" I think that's the council and the mayor. We're trying to run a government that provides mission-critical safety and quality of life and standard of living services. And we're trying to fix the government at the same time. Both are full-time jobs. You have been outspoken as the chair of this committee publicly and privately about the need for greater respect for our workforce, greater investment in our workforce, and to grow our workforce as we try to meet the challenges of paving our streets and fixing our sidewalks and all of the myriad challenges we face. So here's the crisis we face. As Gloria will tell you, although it's not an easy thing to talk about, we have about the way our civil service system is set up, it takes 200 days for someone to submit a request to have someone hired and to have, at the end of that process, a certified list that they can draw upon. Now, that's if they start from scratch. Why are we starting from scratch? We're starting from scratch in almost every area of the city besides hiring police officers because we haven't hired anybody for five or six years. We've been, we often talk about the workforce has shrunk by 5,000. It's actually closer to 7,000, the general fund workforce has shrunk in the last five years. It's a huge shrinkage. And so back when we were hiring in 2006 and 2007, we were often hiring with tests that had been done five years, or maybe even 10 years ago. So if we hired someone in 2006 off of a 10-year-old test, that means that the test was done in 1996 and we're thinking about hiring people in 2014. So we've got to go back and at the very least examine that test and probably rewrite that test or take a shortcut and skip the test and go straight to 100% interviews. So that's a huge backlog and Gloria can correct me, but at last count, we were about 130 positions backlogged. We have 1,500 classifications in the city and we're starting from scratch with about 130, 135. So that takes time, that's that 200 days, but because we're 130 backlogged, it takes 14 months to open the file. So you, as councilmembers, champion an idea and you say, "This is important. We want the CAO or we want the sanitation department or we want the fire department to move on this and we put that money in the budget and we want those people hired." And if it's a position we haven't hired for, and that's almost entirely the case, then it's 14 months to open the file, 200 days to complete the process. Your term is half-done before we can actually hire the person and then that's their first day on the job, right? Then they've got to order their business cards, learn their job, make the connections, et cetera. So we have a bald tire, Mr. Chairman, and this is one of the patches. This is a small patch. The bigger patch is having more exemptions. But if we move to do a temporary, an emergency appointment, which is a normal suggestion if we were not in this crisis, well, then that test needs to go to the front of the queue, right? So you might be jumping up and down or your staff might be frustrated or your constituents might be calling about, "Why isn't this done?" And the reason is because we had to stop a hiring process that we promised you that's finally made it through the budget process, that's finally made it through managed hiring, and now it's stuck in the Personnel Department. Why? Because we have to start the clock on a job for an Innovation Fund person because now it's an emergency appointment. We've got only six months. We can't wait 14 months. We've got to put that to the head of the queue. So we've got pipes that are bursting at DWP and DWP has gone to the extraordinary step of giving the Personnel Department two or three employees. They have three employees working with funding at DWP because their pipes are bursting. They can't hire people fast enough even though they have the money. So from the standpoint of civil service system, if it were working effectively, we would not be before you on this very small piece. We would not be before you asking for additional exemptions. And what Wendy Macy is going to be doing over the next couple of years is she's going to be working to eliminate that backlog. She's going to be working to make sure that our system is working better. That's our commitment to you. We're going to be working with you week in, week out, but she doesn't even start until December 8th, right? That'll be her first day and she still has to deal with a department that's 30% lower staffing than when she founded, a department that itself is having a hard time keeping up with attrition. It's hard to hire people in the Personnel Department so we can hire people in the other 34 departments. So this is the crisis we face and I apologize for taking your time and Councilmember O'Farrell's time, but that's the day-to-day reality we have that we can't close our eyes to and in the meantime, we have to conduct business. So if we want innovation, we can wait 14 months plus 200 days and we can get someone who starts, you know, in a couple of years. And then we're actually more than three-quarters of the way through the mayor's term.
Let me give you another example then. So we've been told we have to wait that long to hire planners to deal with mansionization as a citywide problem. We're talking about ICOs in the areas that have asked for relief. So then the next most desirable places are going to be mansionized like crazy. So why don't we do exemptions for those planners and get it done, you know, a year, year and a half quicker?
Because we're right at the limit of 150 and we have essentially, you know, a handful, I think we're at 147 today. This is one of the three we have left.
So are you telling me that if you got an extra 50, that we'd be able to do time-dated stuff like that?
Absolutely. That is the goal of doing that. This is department-driven. This is not driven out of the mayor's office. The mayor's office isn't looking to bring in a bunch of exempt employees. We have departments clamoring every day because they're hearing from the constituents, they're hearing from councilmembers, and they have their own projects that they feel are mission-critical. So for example, you know, I serve, as you know, one of my least favorite activities, not because I don't have great colleagues, but I serve on the Managed Hiring Committee. It's my least favorite for two reasons. One, it's one of the most difficult balancing acts in the city. And second, everyone hates us. But the reality is, is that we've got these two efforts. One is to balance our budget and one is to get mission-critical people hired. And right at the moment, those two goals are set against each other. It's going to be, but when you put those two together, you have an almost perfect storm of delayed gratification, of dashed expectations. And so we're trying to reform managed hiring and we've made huge progress. Now we have blanket exemptions for more than half the departments have been approved already in this fiscal year. And so if we can fix managed hiring and eventually replace it, and if we can have some additional exemptions for this crisis, then we need to fix the civil service system and we need to fix the Personnel Department's capacity. They can't operate indefinitely with this kind of backlog. We have to, and it's not going to be that we get 30% more staff. There are going to be some additional staff, but there's also going to have to be some very significant changes in the way we do business. That's the task we've given to someone who, I agree, Councilmember O'Farrell, has a stellar resume, but she's one person. She's going to have to work with a great team who are right now kind of drowning in paper and backlog and tremendous clamor every single day, "Get this person hired, get this person hired, get this person hired." And that's why we're here, asking for a patch. And we can do a report, but that only adds to the pile of backlog paperwork. It just goes on top of the stack of 130 positions that need. And so while we work on the report, we're not working on hiring people.
Now, is there any kind of a process where someone from the CAO's office could fill this position? And would that have to go as slowly if that were done?
Yeah, you know, if this were in the mayor's office or a council office, we wouldn't be going through civil service, as you know. We would pick someone who had a direct affinity for innovation, perhaps someone who's already worked on this project. The next best thing is the CAO's office and might very well be someone who, I really don't expect we'll bring someone from the outside. I mean, this is about the city of Los Angeles, but it'll allow us to choose someone from basically anywhere within the city family, the CAO's office, mayor and council office, or the departments. And to do it quickly, we're having a news conference this Thursday to launch the fund and we're before you today looking for somebody to staff it.
Mr. O'Farrell, any questions, comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm on board with this. So maybe I suggest that you consider if the CEO is to come back with a report, that they come back directly to council rather than the committee and then to council, just an idea. But I totally respect your deliberative thinking on this, but I personally am on board to move forward.
And obviously, it's not because of the position itself. I'm a huge fan of what we're doing and even helped to drive it a little bit. The question is really the bigger question rather than the little question of just this one.
Mr. Chairman...
And we will discuss that in a minute anyway. The big question is, do we have a civil service system or do we dramatically go in the other direction and start exempting everything so that we can make things more expeditious, which is obviously a desire at the same time? Obviously, there's a reason the civil service system was set up, so you know, things are done more completely by merit and less giving of positions to friends and all that. And some of that has happened in the past. There's no question that some of the people filling exempt positions are not the absolutely most qualified people we could find. So how do we, the question is, how do we balance those two needs right now?
And what I was going to suggest, Mr. Chairman, is that those issues deserve the sustained attention of the mayor and the council and the department leadership and the labor unions of the city and the civic leadership of the city. There's no simple and quick answer to those questions. We need to work hard over the next couple of years on just those questions. In the meantime, we have the city to run and I don't think it's an either-or. We are going to have to make some expeditious decisions early on or we're going to see a lot of the mayor's and the council's priorities delayed for a year, two years, three years while we work on this larger thing. And I think it's fair to say with 44,000 people under the civil service system and 150 exemptions, we're not abolishing the civil service system. We are talking about a relatively small number of additional exemptions to work our way through what is essentially a gridlock of being able to move people to hiring. And every month, we're seeing shrinkage in the workforce, literally every single month. And I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. When you balance the risks, right, are we going to put a giant hole in the civil service system that can never be patched? That's one danger. I think it's a relatively remote danger. And then we have a very real and present danger, which is we're about to dip below 30,000 general fund employees from a peak of over 37,000. We will reach that this year. We will drop below 30,000. And that's just a number, but that number is real people who are paving real streets or who are, just another example, sanitation, I'm sorry, street services doesn't have a crew now to grind sidewalks because that crew is now working on asphalting sidewalks because the other crew that was working on that is working on paving streets. So we stopped grinding sidewalks. So that means that if we have an inch or two-inch break in a sidewalk and we have them all over the city in both of your districts and we're put on notice and someone trips on that two inches, we might pay 10,000, we might pay 100,000, we may pay 250,000 because not only do we pay the medical bills, but because if we're on notice, we also are guilty of negligence, which triples the damages. And it's because we don't have a crew. So it's not because we don't have money in the budget, it's not because it hasn't passed managed hiring, it's because we haven't hired them. So that's the kind of challenge. All by itself, the exemptions are not going to solve that, but they are such a part of just being able to get the job of running the city done in the short run while we work on the larger framework of redesigning, revamping, and making the civil service system work in the 21st century. The principles of merit remain timeless and we remain dedicated to them. But the world's a very different place than 1939 when the civil service system was designed. So we have to redesign the civil service system for 2015. That's not going to happen between now and when we need to hire someone for the Innovation Fund.
Well, I think I'm going to take this discussion as the report that I requested because I think we've gotten a lot of information and I'm going to let this one go, at least in my suggestion, and Mr. O'Farrell has already given his inclination the same direction. So I will move that we approve this item without the report and move forward.
Well, on behalf of the mayor, we'd like to recognize you, Mr. Chairman, for your innovative approach to running the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three.
Item three, Economic and Workforce Development Department report relative to the exemption of one senior project assistant position for the Economic and Workforce Development Department pursuant to Charter Section 1001d4.
Welcome.
Good morning, Lisa Salazar, Economic and Workforce Development Department.
And when does the department intend to hire the position and why does it need to be exempt?
Oh, this position is already filled. This is a renewal.
Oh, okay.
It's 100% grant-funded and there's no impact to the general fund.
Very good. Any other questions? So without objection, we'll move that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four.
Item four, Department of Animal Services report relative to the exemption of 20 animal license canvasser positions for the Department of Animal Services pursuant to Charter Section 1001d3. This matter has also been referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Councilmember O'Farrell. Mark Salazar, Department of Animal Services, Director of Field Operations.
Good morning. I'm Tammy Watson with the Personnel Department, supporting the Department of Animal Services.
There is a request regarding the 20 exempt positions for animal license canvassing. A little over a year ago, the department initiated a special team with license canvassing using animal control officers. Earlier this year, the officers proved some very impressive numbers with being able to actually collect licenses that gave us groundwork to go to council and ask for the approval of $200,000 to fund part-time exempt canvassers for a canvassing program, which would also assist the department by helping to resource much-needed animal control officers back into field services. We are right now in the middle of recruitment for the 20 exempt licensing canvassers. We have received, under two deadlines, about 36 applications. We've done an initial review on them. It looks like we'll be having about 23 interviews. It looks like we'll be having about 23 interviews within the next couple of weeks, and we hope to move forward on the recruitment for those canvassers.
Now, are these positions supposed to be limited in duration, or is this a need that we, in theory, would have in perpetuity?
It was a pilot program funded for one year. The $200,000 covers 12 canvassers for that period of time. So we'll assess the program during the year and see if it's actually doing what it should be doing, which is increasing licenses in the city and also paying for the program.
And what enforcement powers does the program have, the canvassers have?
Well, the canvassers will be approaching, collecting license fees and also providing information regarding Spain neuter ordinances. We have, we are right now with the city attorney's office, as you know, working on the administrative citation program. A question was raised during this, wondering if the canvassers actually would be able to issue administrative citations, and it does look like they would be able to do that and would probably be one of their job functions with the program as well.
Now, is there any reason why the department can't use 10 temporary emergency positions rather than 20 part-time, or half of whatever we wind up using 12, six instead of 12?
The, well, the pilot was designed for part-time, so we can also gain the most number of hours of employees actually out in the field. Exempt positions won't necessarily, well, they won't have vacation time or other time afforded to them, so they will, we anticipate, having the strongest number of hours by having exempt positions fill those roles.
Yeah, personally, my objection to this is I know we've been trying to get by on the cheap in terms of how we deal with our employees and find every possible way not to give them benefits and other things that I think in years past we thought appropriate. So I would ask that if we use these as halftime positions, that we designate them as halftime positions and certify their status to laser so that they're eligible for halftime benefits.
The cost on that might not, well, obviously, wouldn't be covered under the $200,000 that's initially afforded for this, so we wouldn't be able to probably cover the cost of 12. Tammy might be able to answer better on that. I did wanna interject, though, that our anticipation with what these exempt positions will be able to show us this next year, I think will bring us back some very impressive results, which we look forward to being able to develop the program into regular positions. That's what our hopes are.
And as Mark mentioned, the department was awarded $200,000 only by means of the ordinance, so the $200,000 would not cover the costs of full-time employees and benefits.
But how much money would it cost to actually do these as appropriately designated halftime positions?
We have not done those calculations. We were basing it on what was presented to us by council for the part-time exempt positions, but we can go back and do those calculations.
Sir, I understand that these were approved as part-time temporary positions. Is that correct, as needed?
Correct.
So you don't even have the authority to fill them as a halftime position, because they were not approved as halftime positions?
That's correct.
Well, I'm gonna suggest that we prove them as halftime positions and that we refer this to budget for further discussion on whether that's possible. If we're not able to get a recommendation from budget, then obviously we would have to go through this way. But I think we've, this has been kind of a scam that the city's been pulling for the last few years. I object to it less because we are in desperate circumstances. I think as we come out of this recession, we need to stop playing this game with our employees and start treating them appropriately and providing benefits and not providing essentially what's a bad job without any kind of benefits and backup. So that would be my suggestion. Mr. O'Farrell?
Given that the report is about the approval of as-needed positions, are we, can we change it to halftime positions? That would be my question.
Well, I think that the recommendation would be to change it to 20 resolution authority positions, but the question is, is there a list for animal canvassers?
Well, and again, it's the funding issue. So I think it has to go with what was approved.
I can tell you from early figures that we just guestimated, looking at potential regular positions, we're probably looking at less than four positions with funding of $200,000 with benefits and all. So we can come back on that, but again, this was designed, it's just purely as a pilot program, and we really believe the results will be very impressive as we report back on the pilot program.
And this report is solely requesting the approval of the exemption at this point. That is solely what this report is about, as to whether or not to change those authorities to halftime positions and determine whether or not the funding is available or what is the funding. That's an additional item or request, so maybe the department should report back on how much that would actually cost and the feasibility of doing that in relation to costs and what are the numbers? Is it halftime, full-time, what have you? And in the meantime, as far as approving this, this would just simply allow them to exempt these as-needed positions. But as far as hiring, it may be necessary that you report back as to the other possibilities before hiring anybody on an as-needed basis.
What do you think the timing would be on that?
I think you would be able to report back as to the costs involved at the next meeting, right?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward. So at the next meeting, they can explain what the staffing would be involved, either halftime, full-time, and the costs involved.
And what the process would be
Right.
From here in terms of converting them to that if we wanted to explore that.
Including whether or not they have authorities and what that process would be in terms of getting authorities within their departmental personnel ordinance.
I will, I'll consider that, but in the meantime, I just realized we have one speaker from the public, Phyllis Doherty.
Before you, I just have a question. So how long would these positions be for? What span of time?
12 months.
For 12 months?
They're funding for 12 months.
How many hours per week is considered part-time?
It'd be 20 hours per week per person, 1040 per year, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I mean, I personally believe that we absolutely should consider the whole topic of, you know, civil service employees, but beyond that, we have a greater need that all of us should be in the business of, and that is saving animals. And I think these canvassers provide a critical job to that, and that's our top objective as policymakers, and everything else is secondary to that.
You know, and if I could just add to, you know, one of the other thoughts in the process of all this, too, is we were looking for opportunities also to return animal control officers back to regular duties in the field, and the delays in this would obviously hurt us in the field. We want to return them back as quickly as possible. So we were shooting for maybe a January date of having canvassers up and going and having officers back in the field. We would really like to have every opportunity to move forward as quickly as we can as well.
And something to add to that is, I know that the, these are citywide, yes?
That's correct.
Okay. I do community walks every month, and in a couple of my own neighborhoods, I would love to have canvassers join me so that we could get attention to some of these communities, these pockets in the 13th district. You know, without that, I would love Animal Services to equip my team, because there's such an urgent need in the city for this service.
We would be honored to do that. One of the struggles we've had of recent, again with our staffing challenges, is even this last summer, we've reduced six officers at times down to just one officer in the field, just due to reasons that they were just not able to be at work or in that capacity as a canvasser. So again, we're very excited at the opportunity to have people out in the field giving information and also collecting on dog licenses.
I also think that this could be a good entry into civil service for the city of Los Angeles. And the over, the larger issue here is that within the next handful of years, some departments are gonna lose 30, 40% through attrition. So we need to be thinking about multiple ways of getting people back into civil service, and I see this as perhaps a pathway for that, as opposed to a hindrance.
We do, too. Yes.
So, Ms. Doherty?
Phyllis Doherty, thank you for your concern over the employees, because this is extremely important, especially in this, there's some real issues here that are not being mentioned. And of course, you always get the sugar coating. One of the things you need to know is, why are 19 officers being held in administration by Mr. Salazar when they could be out there? And why are they trying to get three emergency appointments for lieutenants right now so that they will not have to go back out and work in the field? So there are some really key questions that need to be answered before you can really absorb all of this in the way it's being presented. But in regard to issuing administrative citations, which you're, it's sort of dangling a carrot for you, oh, look what they're going to do. If these are part-time employees, not inspectors, not enforcement officers, and don't have PC-832 training, arrests, seizures, and the training that you have to have to become an officer, then they can't issue citations. So, and they have to have complete background checks, complete Department of Labor background checks for that class, for that training. So we're skipping ahead and saying we don't need any of that? Are they gonna be able to collect cash? Our full-time officers are not allowed to collect cash in the field, and if they can't collect cash, what is that gonna do to the program? This was all included in the original report on administrative citations, and it seems like it's just being skipped over. As you've said, to try to provide powers to someone to replace permanent employees that they're not really entitled to have and that they're not gonna be able to carry out, you'll end up with lawsuits, you'll end up with people wanting to be paid at a higher level, maybe being able to be, to claim the equal pay for the equal duties, because if they're issuing citations, they're then in an officer and inspector status, not canvassers. I don't think you know of any canvassers that are performing police officer powers.
Thank you. And I wonder if we could have staff come back up for a moment. As long as we have you here, it seems timely to ask you, have you thought through these issues in terms of training, and will these part-timers get the necessary training that full-timers would have presumably had doing the same work?
Absolutely. The canvassers are not under the requirements of PC-832. They don't issue citations. They are issuing, administrative citations are not court citations. They are essentially a bill. They are issuing a notice for a corrective action with a fine penalty administered by the city. It doesn't go through the court process, so they don't fall under any of the obligations. Many cities utilize canvassers for issuing administrative-type citations. In fact, we have a local city where the clerks issue administrative citations internally in the department when licenses aren't renewed. They send out their renewal letter, and after 60 days, if they haven't complied, they send them an administrative citation in the mail issued by a clerk. The ordinance allows for that. And so we will absolutely make sure that our officers, what we're most concerned about with our canvassers is that they really get fully engulfed in understanding the processes of the city, the educational information, the services that the city officers, and they're really out there as ambassadors, providing good information and reasons why to license your animals and span neuter your animals. But they will have, with our program, the ability to issue an administrative citation, and with that as well, the way that we've designed citations for our department, it will give them a period of time to comply before the actual citation would kick into place. So we look forward, we think that this will be actually a very strong program and bring in some very impressive results, again, as we said. And we just want to emphasize, we believe that the 12 canvassers that we would have out there this next year will do such an impressive job that we would look forward to having them in regular positions in the city and come back with a report that would support that.
Thank you. I asked the city attorney, since we were about to conclude this item, I just got another speaker's slip. Am I required to hear it at this stage?
If you've concluded already.
But we haven't, we're still talking.
Then I think you should allow that.
Okay. All right. Next speaker is Daniel Gus.
Thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Kreutz. I do appreciate that. This is a well-intended idea that's absolutely ass-backwards. I have an 82-page report on problems, on how you're missing out on millions of dollars of dog licensing revenue. This well-intended program is the equivalent of buying a nice pair of Bruno Mali shoes, but buying two left ones and no right one. You're going to have 20 new employees and their benefits enforcing policies that I've offered to show you how badly they're wrong. I'm gonna give you one example of how ass-backwards the Spain neuter licenses are. And by the way, they're trying to misappropriate $62,000 of the Animal Welfare Trust Fund to buy segways for canvassers. If there's somebody out there who has an intact dog, they owe about $250 for a dog license in the city, but the city doesn't issue a citation for $250. They let them buy a $20 altered dog license, hoping that they're gonna get their dog fixed, and hoping that they're gonna come back and show that the dog is fixed. The way they should do it is have these people out there issuing $250 licenses, and if the people do the right thing and prove that their dog has been fixed, then they get a refund of all but 20 of it. Multiply that ridiculous concept by about 15 other ways you could be bringing in much more money, millions of dollars, and have a much more effective program. I am willing to sit down with leadership. Ms. Barnett said, no, I only want to sit down with you and Mark Salazar. I insisted city leaders be part of it. They don't want it. It's a good idea, really, really bad execution. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And do you want to leave a copy with that, or do you not have a copy?
Can your office contact me, and I'll be glad to share it with you?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
That'd be great. All right. Well, I'm gonna suggest that we follow the suggestion that was made. We move this forward, and we get a report before positions are hired. And we make clear that this is, if this is approved for one year, this is just for one year, and that we expect a program where employees are employees and they're paid full benefits at that point. Without objection?
No objection.
No objection. Okay. Next item, item number five.
Item number five, continues August 19, 2014. Personnel Department report responsive adopted budget recommendation relative to increasing the number of exempt positions as allowed in Charter Section 1001d4 for a total of 250 exempted.
Good morning.
Welcome.
I'm Liam, Personnel Department. As requested in the budget report back, we provided information regarding the mechanism within the city charter to increase the number of exempt positions, specifically the 150, which allows, the charter allows to go up to 1% of the positions in the city. If we were to use provisions within that charter, we could increase the number from 150 to an additional 200 positions above that. I believe there was also disheartening why moving forward with that at this point in time, and I believe Mr. Cole responded, provided information regarding that, that part. Are there's additional questions you may have had?
Do you have any more detail on the specific needs? I know we'd asked previously, I believe, for a report from the C A O. about the positions that are currently in the, in the number that are exempt, who the current incumbent is, and some other questions. I haven't heard that those have been, that report has been given to us.
We've provided some additional information to the C L A. and to the C A O. regarding the numbers of exemptions and the individuals exempted. As I believe, as Mr. Cole had pointed out, what happens here is that as each exemption goes forward, the council would have the opportunity to discuss the needs for that particular exemption?
If we could get a list back of all the current exempt positions Well, if we could get a list back of all the current exempt positions and who are in them, what the current position is. And when I discussed this with the mayor's office, they were open to a more modest increase of fifty exemptions over the hundred and fifty allowed. Do you have any idea what types of positions those would be among the next fifty?
I believe that, I'm not aware of any that are particularly pending at this point in time. I believe each one is considered on its own merits, and the decision on moving it forward is, lies within the mayor's office, and then again, the discussion before the council is why it would be appropriate.
So you're not aware that there are particular categories that are higher priorities right now?
Mr. Lemus, if you could just kind of share some of the, the types of jobs that normally we receive exemption requests, just in general?
And I'll also ask Mr. Cole the same question, if the mayor has priorities at this point.
In, in general, the, the exemptions are usually requested for positions that have a particular expertise, a particular need for a background that may not exist within the city itself, for, let's say, for outreach to particular community groups, advocacy in particular sections of the city that we don't normally provide within the city, and general expertise that would be found outside of the city on a basis.
As I referenced before, again, Mr. Chairman Rick Cole, Deputy Mayor for Budget and Innovation. This is largely driven by the pressure we've felt for the last fifteen months from departments. And, and we, like you, start with a skeptical view, you know, is there another way to, to solve this problem? And we've turned down quite a number, both because we thought there were better ways that were more in keeping with the, the civil service system, but mostly because we've been up against this hundred and fifty cap that has been in the, in existence now for, for a couple of decades. As, as you well know, Mr. Chairman, there's a, there's a provision in the city charter that allows us to go beyond that cap that has never been exercised. This is the first time we're, we're asking to exercise. I won't reiterate the comments I made earlier about sort of the pressure we find ourselves under. We, we often are bringing in people from other departments rather than, than from outside the city. They, they often though, because of the difficulty in getting folks hired through the regular system, are, are the functional equivalent of the emergency appointments. That's, that's really what they are, except that the emergency appointment triggers the need, again, as I said earlier, to do the, to, to bring the test forward, and we've only got a six-month window to do that. And as, as, as Jody from the C A O's office pointed out, then, then we might get an equally qualified candidate, right? But who's, who's already been in the, the job six months, and now we have, we have the challenge of someone who didn't, didn't fare as well in the competitive process and not being able to stay on, so then we have turnover. So the kind of positions really run the gamut, Mr. Chairman, they've come from virtually every single department. And these are not initiated by the mayor's office. These are, as the mayor's office or the council offices are, are putting pressure on departments to move forward with their priorities, the departments are coming forward and saying, we need this job in order to move this priority forward. And, and it literally runs the gamut of, of positions up and down the scale. There, there is right now a list of about fifteen that we're, we're considering, but of course, we're, we're stuck. So that's why we're comfortable with the smaller number. We, we don't view this as, as something that's, that's a fundamental change in the way we do government. We view this as a way to, to deal with the very specific challenges of a shrinking workforce and a backlog personnel system.
And I, I have those concerns. I think we're now at a point where it's very difficult for us to deliver services. We've gone way below a point that I think is reasonable. One of the reasons why I would like to see us eliminate managed hiring, which I think adds a, a slowdown element to that, but not before us today.
So we very much appreciate your openness to a, to a shorter term. We really view this, again, as part of what we talked about when we were talking about a specific example. We think over the next year or two, there needs to be a fundamental discussion about a modern human resources function for the city that includes a continuation of the merit-based civil service system. There's no effort to change the principles, but we, we have a system that was designed for a time when, when, when jobs were pretty static. And so you could test people's skills with a, with a standardized test and a number-two pencil, and you could have five thousand people apply. And in theory, the people who, the fifty people who scored best at filling in the bubbles would be your best people because you have very standard jobs that probably didn't change much for ten or fifteen years. With today's technology and with today's changes, jobs are changing much more rapidly. We have to redesign the merit system for the twenty-first century. And, and that's something we look forward to engaging with the council in a, in a broad and deep discussion, and includes academic stakeholders, labor stakeholders, community stakeholders. But in the short run, we got, we got a city to run.
Do you think we can, we can engage in that process within the next year, or, or begin it in a year?
I, I welcome that. Of course, you know, the council president and the mayor obviously set to some extent, you know, we can only take on so many problems. We've got to figure out what we're going to do with the convention center, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do with our budget. There's a lot of other things queued up. For me, there is no higher priority than figuring out how we have the very best people to, to create the very best-run big city in America. We spend eighty-six percent of our departmental budgets on personnel costs, and yet when we came into office, the citywide training budget was zero. Right? So we, we don't equip our employees very well. We don't put them in facilities that, that are up to date, or even in good repair. We don't, except for some exceptional departments that do a good job of training their own employees within their department, we don't have a citywide orientation, onboarding. We don't have a citywide evaluation process. Right? So some departments do a great job of evaluating their employees. Some, some departments, employees have not been evaluated in years, not, not once. And, and best practices these days are quarterly. So the, these are the kind of things that, that, that we look forward to working with, with you in this committee, and with the Civil Service Commission, and with, with Wendy, and with her talented staff. There are a lot of smart people in this city. There are a lot of people who care deeply about this. And there are thirty thousand people in the general fund and fourteen thousand in the proprietaries who, who depend upon us doing a much better job of training them, equipping them, creating first-quality work environments, and most of all, creating a system that, that motivates and empowers and holds accountable the people who work here. And we're spending way too much money not to focus on this.
Well, I'd have to say, I know there are other priorities, but maybe you and I together can set a goal of having that process started within the next year.
I know it is close to the mayor's heart.
Then, then let's make that effort at least.
I look forward to it. You have my personal commitment.
Important area of focus. All right, I'm going to suggest a couple of things. One, that we move forward on, on our, an increase of fifty exempt positions as agreed to by the mayor's office. That as current exempt positions are vacated, those are eliminated. So we provide the fifty to deal with the somewhat emergency situation we are in, but as people leave, that number reduces itself. And I would ask that, I'd ask the, the mayor's office to give me some feedback on this. If we could also ask that candidates for these positions have to meet the bulletin requirements, that they actually have to show that they are qualified for those positions.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. On the first item, as, as you know, we're, we're happy with, with the fifty. I, I can't sit here today and, and say that if we increased it by fifty, we'd have a net fifty, because my understanding is that if you increase it above the one fifty in the charter, which is allowed by the charter, up to one percent, which would be four hundred and forty, so that would actually be more than doubling the current hundred and fifty, almost tripling. It triggers some of the positions that are currently counted, are subtracted from, from that additional. So if it could be a net fifty, whatever that works out to be, we're fine with. We're not trying to, to, to get more than fifty, but as long as we don't end up with...
I'm suggesting a net fifty that reduces itself.
Fair enough. I appreciate it.
It's a net fifty in the beginning, and as, as people leave, it reduces back to, in the, in the other direction.
So let me, let, let me on the, on the next two points suggest an expectation and a requirement for coming to this committee if we're going to renew a position, and an expectation from this committee that if we're ever going to put someone in who doesn't technically meet the, the bulletin requirements, if there is a bulletin, which of course is oftentimes the problem. But if, if, if we could simply come back to the committee, of course, that's more work for us and more work for you, but it will give you a real-world example of, of what is involved here. But if we just take a principle that, that they all expire, we might find ourselves sort of with unintended consequences. So by bringing them back to you, we have the, the advantage of transparency, we have the advantage of accountability, and then you can see whether we're, whether we're, whether continuing some of these exemptions makes sense or not on a case-by-case basis. I think it's more cumbersome, but I think it's more likely to avoid unintended consequences. Because if you just flat-out say the exemptions expire and the number comes down, we might find ourselves in a, in an awkward position that we'll have to then crawl out of.
I think that's probably a fair enough point. All right, so, so for either continuing exemptions in, in situations where the positions have to be rehired, and for folks that are not fully qualified under, under the bulletin requirements, you would have to come back to the committee. And that would be part of the, the written motion that we move forward.
And then, and then we really sort of share these difficult challenges. We get, we begin to understand, and I think that will actually be a helpful exercise in this larger commitment to figure out, okay. So as we see the examples, the real-world examples of where our current civil service system or our backlog personnel department are impinging upon our ability to, to get the right people in the right jobs at the right time, then we begin to see systematically, we begin to make data-driven decisions about how to reform. It's not based upon an academic theory or a, a, a labor bargaining position or a mayoral dictum. It's really based upon data. We, we take a look at, at why is it that we're not getting the right people at the right time in the right jobs? And then we figure out how to systematically revamp the system for the twenty-first century.
Mr. O'Farrell, any questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I think that's a fair compromise. I hate to see us, I hate to see a lockdown on flexibility for something so important. And I think that that never-used provision in the city charter exists for a reason, because now's the time to use it because of the sense of urgency that we have. So I think it's okay. I'm one of those council members that puts pressure on the departments every day of the week. So I don't want to, you know, talk out of one side of my mouth. I want to be able to also support the departments that I'm expecting a lot from. And so I, I support increasing the tools we have as opposed to decreasing them in this sort of exceptional time period that we're in. And I think these exempt positions are, are a way forward, like I said, at this particular time. So...
Very good. So we will move that item forward as outlined, without, without objection?
No, excuse me, committee members. The charter does mention or state that the increase needs to be done through ordinance. So would the, the instruction be for a request for city attorney to work with personnel department to draft the ordinance to increase the count by a net fifty, and then report back to this committee when that comes forward?
I suspect that would be the case.
Yes.
With all the other provisions that we have discussed.
Yes, and then with the report back, regarding the report backs, I'd also recommend that perhaps that one of the other items included in, in your list of report backs be that personnel department also calculate the one percent if it were done on a department-by-department basis, identify those that would exceed the one percent, just to see if there's any departments that are currently above and beyond. That may be using the exemptions more than others.
That'd be helpful to know, so sure, let's put that, that in there as well.
Well, there is, there is nothing in the charter that provides that the one percent has to be divided by departments, so...
No, that's just informational. It wouldn't be in the ordinance, it would just be a part of our, our report back, so...
Yes, and I just wanted to give a little bit more background on also the way that the current approval process is for these, is that the department submits them to council. Council has ten council days to deny the request by two-thirds vote. And if council doesn't do that within ten council days, they become automatically approved. So for the most part, this is viewed as a mayoral, you know, authority. So increasing that amount just increases that, that authority as well.
Very good. All right, well, we will move that item forward as outlined.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I look forward to working with you and your staff and your fellow committee members on the larger challenge. And we'll, it's, it's one that we share a great sense of urgency about.
Thank you. And item number six, and I will give us sort of a ten-minute warning, council starts in ten minutes.
Item six, Bureau of Sanitation report relative to staff resources plan for the zero-waste L.A. commercial multifamily franchise system. This matters also to refer to energy and environment.
Good morning, Honorable Councilmember Kretz, Honorable Councilmember O'Farrell. It's great being here this morning. I'm Alex Hallow, I'm the Assistant General Manager for the Bureau of Sanitation. Today, I'm joined with Lisa Maury, our Chief Financial Officer, and with Dan Myers, our Assistant Division Manager. We are here this morning seeking your approval for our resources plan for the exclusive franchise program. In order to clean up the air in Los Angeles, reduce truck traffic, increase diversion and recycling, and begin the organic recycling from multifamily and commercial establishment, the L.A. City Council voted to move from an open permit system for trash collection to an exclusive franchise system. Sanitation per council instruction released a request for proposals for the exclusive collection of solid waste from eleven waste sheds in the city. And I'm glad to report that last Wednesday, October twenty-nine, we received fifteen proposals, which our staff are in the process of beginning to evaluate. One of the instructions that we got from council was for sanitation to come back with the resources plan that will help us launch and monitor the exclusive franchise program. Dan Myers will be discussing our staffing needs and will be, will be available to do, follow up any questions you might have. Dan?
Thank you. Dan Myers, L.A. Sanitation. As Alex mentioned, we were asked to come back with a staffing plan, but what we knew through the development of that is the staffing requirements and resources needed to implement a new program of this magnitude required a significant amount of effort to obtain the benchmarks and the information needed to calculated, to calculate workload. To this end, L.A. SAN hired C H two M Hill to prepare a staffing resource plan. The staffing resource plan was completed in two thousand and fourteen, in August of two thousand and fourteen. Part of the analysis that C H two M Hill performed was, was to identify the resources needed to implement the franchise, implement a franchise to support superior customer service, facility certification, compliance with diversion requirements, and compliance with customer billing and payment terms of the franchise. As part of their analysis, C H two M Hill performed a survey and benchmark against twelve other cities. And as a result, C H two prepared a very detailed workload, workload analysis, which included assumptions as far as the details of each function that need to be prepared, details all the way down to the level of... to the level of how many calls a customer service rep has to take a day and how many minutes each one of those calls will take. The analysis was very, very detailed, and again, did it by looking at other jurisdictions and internally at our own call center and other functions, including the Department of Water and Power. CH2 identified in their staffing plan the need of 112 full-time positions to support the franchise effort. In addition to those 112 positions, they also identified 85 transitional staff that would be needed during the implementation period. These would be part-time staff, just needed to handle what we know will be a very high workload of when we transition from the current system to the new system. CH2 also identified a very eloquent way of designing this staffing. It included establishing three different regions throughout the city. And within those three regions, we'd be able to concentrate the field staffing as well as contract management. And LA SAN concurs with the staffing requirements identified in the CH2M Hill report. However, not all of the positions, not all of the 112 positions identified will be new full-time positions. We've identified that 11 existing positions within sanitation would be allocated towards the franchise program. And we identified that 70 new full-time positions would be requested over a three-phased approach, which I'll describe in a minute. The balance of those positions, of the 112, would be contract positions. The idea behind the contract positions is LA SAN, we believe we need to identify the actual steady-state resources that will be needed when the program is fully developed. So, we wanted to use a small portion of the staff, as contract staff, to get us through that transition phase. We would then come back and identify of those 31 contracted staff, how many of those would actually need to be brought in as full-time city employees. As I'd mentioned, we're looking at a three-phase plan. The timing to bring on new staff is critical to meet the very aggressive goals of implementing the new franchise system. As Alex had mentioned, the proposals have been received, and we identified the staff necessary to actually evaluate and begin negotiations with the franchised haulers. However, there's a multitude of multiple tasks that must be performed concurrently and must begin now. As a result of that, the first phase, we're requesting 16 resolution authorities this fiscal year, in addition to the 11 existing staff that will be allocated to the program. The remaining two phases will be requested as part of the normal budget process. Sanitation has prepared a budget package for the '15-'16 fiscal year. That includes the additional 36 full-time staff that will need to be brought in. Phase three will be presented to the city as part of the fiscal year '16-'17 budget. It's very important to note that there is not an additional budget request associated with the 16 resolution authorities this year. Sanitation has identified salary savings within our existing budget to pay for those 16 positions.
So, next year, it'll be budgeted through the general fund just for that one year, presumably?
Well, as part of the next fiscal year budget, will be the 16 resolution authorities and the 36 additional staff. There is not a general fund component to this request. Both the resolution authorities this year and the additional staff and resolution authorities for next fiscal year will be paid for out of the AB-939 fees we currently collect from our permanent haulers that are deposited in the citywide recycling trust fund. So, no general fund allocations for our budget requests. And that's in phase one, two, and three, and moving forward. As we enter into the '16-'17 fiscal year, we have identified that a portion of the future franchise fees that we'll be collecting as part of the franchise program will be needed to supplant the contracted staff that are hired on through the program. But again, still no general fund component.
So, this is expected to be self-sustaining once it's up and running, and the franchise fees will cover the cost of staff to operate the program?
100% self-sufficient.
Very good. Mr. O'Farrell?
One question. When, what fiscal year is it expected that it will be, excuse me, a self-sustaining program?
Well, it's self-sustaining now. We currently collect AB-939 fees from our permanent haulers. Those AB-939 fees, we have sufficient funds to actually take us through the '15-'16 fiscal year. And in the '16-'17 fiscal year is when the franchise fees will kick in, and that will be used to take care of the balance of the additional staff brought in during that time. So, it's self-sufficient now and will be self-sufficient throughout the duration of the program.
Do they still pay the AB-939 fees in addition to the franchise fee once it's up and running?
Yes, the franchisees will still have the two fees, AB-939 fee and the franchise fee.
So, presumably, once we have a franchise fee, will that alone fully cover the system and allow us to use the 939 monies for other recycling functions?
It's actually the other way around. The AB-939 fee is a fairly restrictive fee, and what it can be used for, it can be used for recycling fees, but it is, it's also specifically identified for administration of the recycling programs.
We'd use those up first and then finish the funding with some portion of the franchise fee.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any other questions?
That's it.
If not, we will move this forward without objection.
Thank you.
And thank you for a great plan and all your great work on this. Item number seven?
Item number seven, CAO report relative proposed contract with Spay for L.A. Inc. for mobile spay neuter services for zip codes 9003, 90011, 90018, and 90037.
Well, welcome.
Morning, council members. Janice Chang Yu, Office of the CAO. For your consideration today is a Department of Animal Services request to contract with Spay for L.A. for mobile spay and neuter services. The department currently has a mobile spay and neuter contract, and the difference with this one is that this one is going to be focused, this is a one-year contract with two one-year options to extend, and it'll be focused on certain zip codes within the city. And this is based on studies that have shown that these areas have high need and intake into shelters from these areas is also very high. And so, this is somewhat of a pilot program, that's it's a one-year contract to begin with to study the effect of not requesting income verification for these locations, but just that they reside in the particular zip codes. And the intent of this is that it will serve low-income residents just within those zip codes.
Any idea why Spay for L.A. was the only bidder on the RFP?
Good morning, council members. John Chubb is Department of Animal Services. We sent it out to a number of different organizations. There's not a whole lot of organizations that do this right now. We just have the Amanda Foundation, Spay for L.A., that's about it.
Just for the ordinance.
But we did release this as widely as we could. We just didn't get the response, a large number of responses.
Are there plans to use any more funding out of the Animal Sterilization Trust Fund for any other different programs this year?
Aside from, this is a new program, so it would be, this would be the one new contract that we would have using animal sterilization funds this fiscal year.
And how much money is in the fund currently?
It's about almost $4 million.
And our current funding for sterilization this year, would this added to it? What are we planning on spending this year?
This year, we're planning on spending about $1.8 million with new contractors. And councilman, as you know, we have a new contractor in place. That's the ASPCA. They just started in April, so we'll be able to spend more money in the animal sterilization fund this fiscal year.
Very good. Other questions, comments?
A question. I am 1,000% in support of taking the Spaymobile where it's needed the most. If we are outside of these council districts and have little pockets of need, is there any flexibility to occasionally, or like on a one-off, come to a specific neighborhood outside of eight, nine, and 10?
Yes. The department has a prerogative to change the zip codes. We made that very clear in the contract, but we will be focusing on the four zip codes initially. We actually do have to report back to our board in 10 months into the contract to see how well we're doing with this concept of targeting zip codes. But we do have, we do have the ability to change up the zip codes. That's correct.
Okay, just because, just really, a couple of times over the next year, I might request a very site-specific location where it can be very useful in my district, but it's a very, very, very small...
The Amanda Foundation?
Basically, not opening up a whole zip code, but just saying, okay, maybe a special event or a week or...
Yeah, that's it.
Council member, we can also do that now with Amanda Foundation. So, if you have that need, we can, we could address it immediately.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. If there's, let's see, I think we have one speaker, Daniel Gus. And since council is just about to start, I'm going to ask you to just speak for one minute.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Council members, I have a new article on CityWatch L.A. about how your animal trust funds are being pickpocketed. And it's another reason why you need a comprehensive audit. I'll leave you a, I'll leave you a copy of this. Mr. O'Farrell's right, you do want to hit pockets. He also knows that on North Ardmore, you have a serious problem with that. The problem is that your RFP process is hideous. The department said they issued 1,200 RFPs to take over the Northeast Valley in Mr. Alarcon's district shelter. They only got one reply. You really do need to dig to find out. Why is there only one proposal here? Because it's a system which has not had integrity in the past. The trust funds are mismanaged. I documented it on CityWatch. Thank you. I'll give you back a few extra seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move this item forward without objection.
No objection.
And we have remaining only public comment, and since council has started, I'm going to take an unusual step and ask you just to speak for 30 seconds. Daniel Gus to be followed by Phyllis Doherty.
I'll wave it. I'll wave it as a thank you to you.
Okay.
Thank you. I will be very short. I just want to mention that I hope you realize that a penalty for breaking the law is not just a bill. I'm sure you realize that there are going to be repercussions. But I just want to tell you that there is a very, very good way to do licensing automated through the mail and dividing it into only being prorated and only do twice a year. You collect licensing twice a year on a six-month basis and use our automated system with our water and power bills, I mean, our water and power lists that already show us where all the animals are. This is a waste of time, and it's not going to work correctly. When you do get ready for something that will work, there are proven ways that do it.
Thank you. And without any other business, we are adjourned.